We're all set.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for joining the City of Kingston's Common Council at our monthly council meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 4th. My name is Andrea Short. Before we begin, we would like to go over a few guidelines to help us navigate the system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and press remain muted and off camera for the length of the meeting. As organizer tonight, who is both Elisa and myself, we've reserved the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Council members and city staff will control their own mute button. Good practice would be to mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website. If you have any audio issues, send a text message to the following number, eight four five, five nine four, six one two zero. Please note phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. The number again to text is eight four five, five nine four, six one two zero. As the organizers for tonight, Elisa and I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately. Lastly, at tonight's meeting, we have an attendance city clerk, Elisa Tinty, and corporation counsel Kevin Bryant. The alderman will be announced during roll call. Thank you for your patience and on behalf of the common council, I wish you and your family good health. Now going to call this meeting to order at seven thirty seven P M. On May 4th, two thousand twenty one. May you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence? The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. May I please have roll call? Alderman Ventura Morales.
Here.
Alderman Coop.
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Here.
Alderman Worthington.
Here.
Alderman Tolloman.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman O'Reilly.
Here.
Alderman Chavitt. Steve, you just had to unmute yourself to say here. Or give a thumbs up. Thumbs up.
Okay. Actually.
Alderman Hirsch.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. And I have a motion dispensed for the minutes of the previous meeting and approved same motion by Tony Davis, second by Rennie Scott Childress. Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the general bills? Motion by Michelle Hirsch, second by Rennie Scott Childress. I'm sorry, I forgot to call for the vote. I'm gonna go back a step, rushing a little bit here. I'm to come the motion to dispense for the minutes of the previous meeting. There was a motion by Tony Davis, a second by Rennie Scott Childress. Can I have all in favor, please? Opposed, motion is adopted nine zero. My apologies for that. The motion to dispense with the reading of the general bills, motion was made by Michelle Hirsch and second was by Rennie Scott Childress. All in favor, please? Opposed, motion is adopted nine to zero. We're now entering into the public speaking portion of the meeting. We do have four speakers for tonight. We also received written comments and they could be found on the city website. So we'll open the floor to the speakers who signed up in advance. We have allotted thirty minutes for this purpose. Please state your name and address on the record before you address the council and note that council members cannot engage in debate during this time. The first speaker tonight is Clark Richters. We're just gonna have to unmute first, so. Please bear with us. Clark, you should be able to unmute yourself if you're there. Hi, Clark. Clark, is that you? All right, we'll move on to the next speaker for now and come back. Sarah Wink. Sorry, you're there, you should be able to unmute yourself.
It's ridiculous.
I said, I don't know if you have a easier time doing this as the host.
Hello.
Hi, Jean.
Yeah, I unmuted myself because it said unmute yourself, so am I creating the problem?
No, but you're on our list if you would like to speak first while I figure this out.
Okay.
If you don't mind. All right, thank you, Jean.
Not a problem. Good evening, Madam President, members of the common council, and members of my community in attendance this evening. My name is Jean Jacobs. I live at one thirty nine Wall Street, Kingston. I am a lifelong resident, born and raised here. The reason for my call this evening has to do with the safety of my city. The safety of all citizens should be a number one priority. In March of two thousand, I'm gonna do a little timeline here. In March of two thousand twenty, COVID struck. May twenty fifth, George Floyd, unfortunately, his untimely death. And for that, that breaks my heart as an American and as a human being. Okay, the reform package by our governor went into, I have to go to my other screen. Governor Cuomo ordered number two oh three. On June twelfth, two twenty, he passed the police reform law that four hundred and ninety seven jurisdictions throughout New York State had to follow and have in by April first. In September, our mayor conducted, he created, I should say, ten Kingston residents to be picked for the police reform task force. So that was created in September of two thousand twenty. I commend him for that and putting together a team to research the need of Governor Cuomo's recommendations. In October of two thousand twenty, the first town hall meeting was supposed to be enacted, but that did not occur due to complications with the computer. So the next town hall meeting I attended in November. It was very short, few people spoke, I spoke. Members of the task force gave their description of their recommendations, which was very well done. In December sixteenth, the last town hall meeting was conducted. Mr. Strong gave his overview and again I spoke. In January of two thousand twenty, the report was filed with the mayor of the city as completed. In February, there was a meeting with Board Four Alderman, Rita Worthington, Jeffrey Mentora Morales, and Rennie Childress, who chaired that committee with regard to this. Lester Strong gave a presentation and questions were asked. The public was not invited to that meeting that night. Okay, May, excuse me, March second, the police reform was ratified. Okay? And on March ninth, the police reform was sent to the New York State, as was the request of the governor. My concern to my community tonight and to all of you in attendance is this. I foiled the police reform. It's public knowledge, of course. And I'm a little concerned about the stakeholders, collaboration, trust, transparency, and unity, which was paramount throughout the entire reform of the governor, if you read it in its entirety, and I did. So my concern with you this evening and my community is, one of the questions here, it states, "The local government has consulted with stakeholders, including but not limited to membership and leadership of the local police force, members of the community, with emphasis in areas with high numbers of police and community interactions, interested nonprofits, faith-based community, local groups, district attorney and local public defender, and local elected officials. The local government has offered the plan in draft form to, for public comment to all citizens in the locality and prior to adoption of the plan by the local legislative body." I have concerns there. And at the very end of the fifty-fourth page, it asks for comments. I didn't see any. I know I made one comment on the Engage Reinvention Collaborative page of Mr. Strong's, but I did not see any others, and please correct me if I'm wrong. But I do not feel it was totally unified within the community. I compliment all of the members of the task force. They did an extraordinary amount of research. And I also, in closing, I sent all of you on the twenty second of March, I sent all of you, Mr. LaShawn Parker's Coordinator of Prevention and Safety in the Kingston City School District, Coordinator of the entire Safety Task Force. And if the public this evening thinks that the SROs are the only component in safety in the Kingston School District, you are totally mistaken. Twenty years of work has gone into this, into this plan. And I, I sent it to all of you because I thought maybe you would have considered it in adding something in your position as common council before the plan went in. So I'm, I'm concerned, I'm a concerned community member with regard to this because this plan is the foundation for the future of our city and the safety of our residents. So I do, and I'm going to just do a little shout out right now, sorry if I'm taking all your time, but David McNamara, I have come to know him a little and I'm not, I don't let people in easily until I review their plan. But I think you all have to really listen to this gentleman because he's on the road to success here in our community in helping the youth and the drug addiction and mental health, which we have lost. So I really think we have to totally listen to his plan. The snub program is something that is questionable a bit, but I think we need to open our eyes and we have to open our hearts and listen to what this man has to say. So I thank you for the opportunity and I hope you take this all into consideration this evening. Have a great evening. Bye bye.
I thank you, Jean, have a nice night. Clark, I see your number here, so see that in here. If you could unmute yourself, you just press star six. Clark, are you there? All right, I'll go to Sarah Wink. I saw your number, here you go. All right, we just, there you go, sorry, you're in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Finally, thank you, sorry about before. Hi, Sarah Wink, one fifty Main Street, Kingston. It appears to be the case that Assistant Corporation Counsel Dan Gartenstein created a Facebook profile under the name Gary Daniels and used it to post criticism of residents who are opposed to the Kingstonian project. When the city was asked to confirm or deny this.
All right, I'm here, I just wanna shut down my YouTube window so I don't cause a disturbance.
All right, I, there's another speaker, so can you speak after Sarah?
Follow along. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to, I was on the phone, but I was, I didn't hear the meeting over the phone. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
No.
Are you still there?
Yeah, but Clark, we do have another speaker going, so can you wait until after Sarah is done? All right, Sarah, I'm sorry about that, can you restart?
I'm gonna start again. It appears to be the case that Assistant Corporation Counsel Dan Gartenstein created a Facebook profile under the name Gary Daniel and used it to post criticism of residents who are opposed to the Kingstonian project. When the city was asked to confirm or deny this, the posts and profile were immediately removed. No response was issued from the city or the Office of Corporation Counsel. If in fact this was not Mr. Gartenstein's profile, it would be easy enough for the city to say so. I can only assume that their silence is a tacit admission that it is true. For an administration that touts transparency, there is none in this case. Either Gary Daniels is not an alias and the city is choosing not to tell us that our suspicions are wrong, or city staff is apparently free to use fake accounts to hide themselves as they criticize citizens with whom they disagree. Is it city policy that employees are allowed to behave this way on social media? If not, will there be some repercussions for Mr. Gartenstein's actions? I understand this is not a question and answer forum, but I and other citizens would appreciate hearing back from someone in city government, preferably Corporation Counsel Kevin Bryant, about this episode. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, Clark. You should be able to unmute yourself by pressing star six. All right, he is no longer on the call. So we're gonna go to the last speaker, which is Daniel Cantor. So Daniel, I'm asking you to unmute. And you all, you just have to press star six and then you could unmute yourself and.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
All right.
If you could just state your name and address for the record and then you could address the council members.
My, my home address?
Yeah, you're, yeah.
Oh, okay. Hi, hi, everybody. My name is Daniel Cantor. I am the chairman of the board of the Kingston City Land Bank. I reside at one forty-two Clinton Avenue in Kingston. First of all, good evening and thank you, everybody, for letting me take up a few minutes of your time this evening. I'm speaking tonight because you are considering a resolution to authorize the Kingston City Land Bank to purchase a property at one twenty-four, one twenty-six Franklin Street. And I am here, obviously, to advocate for the passage of that resolution. So some of you have heard this information from you before, so I'll try to keep it brief. And I spoke to you all back at the March caucus meeting and promised that the land bank would be making final decisions about which properties from the list of thirty-six or plus properties on the twenty eighteen Resolution one seventy-two, we would be purchasing or not by the end of the second quarter of this year, after exhaustive due diligence to discern which properties we could legally purchase and sell and which ones are relevant to our mission of creating housing opportunities in the city and worth using our limited funding for. This work has been done ahead of schedule. The list was transmitted to the mayor roughly two weeks ago. I'm not sure if you all have seen it yet, but you will very soon. I believe that context is really, really important to this particular property disposition. So Franklin Street, as most of you probably know, is located in Midtown, which has historically experienced significant light and that continues to this day. At present, there are four city-owned properties on Franklin Street, all of which are off the tax rolls, all of which are derelict, all of which are lacking any productive use whatsoever. The city has had grant funds for years to renovate and sell two of these properties as affordable homeownership opportunities. They've been unable to commence work and I'm not aware of any timeline or real set plan to do so. So we are offering the opportunity to take care of at least one of these properties. It's worth noting as well that this building was already slated to be land bank offices several years ago. However, this project also never got off the ground under city leadership. And the land bank has since advocated for the plan to be abandoned as there was not really neighborhood buy-in for it and we didn't see the benefit of adding offices to a residential block and just generally found the project to be unnecessary. Additionally, the land bank will be renovating five properties this year pursuant to two existing grant agreements. But to be very clear, this is the only property in Midtown that we can possibly purchase at this time due to title issues with other ones that were available to us. Rejecting this resolution, plain and simple, means that this investment in Midtown will be diverted to other parts of the city that have not experienced light on the scale that Midtown has. Just to be totally clear, this is not an indictment of the city. We are a small city with limited resources, limited staff capacity, limited budget, which is why the land bank was created in the first place. That's why our Board of Volunteers are in this fight with you, not against you, to combat this play, return properties to the tax rolls, create increased accessibility to affordable homeownership and safe housing. The land bank currently has funding under two different grant agreements to fully renovate five homes over the course of this year. We have three properties currently undergoing comprehensive rehabs, all scheduled to be completed in the next few months. All those projects are going along well, I can attest to that personally. They will be sold to families earning between sixty and a hundred percent of the area median income. So these are folks that sort of fall into the category of having the capacity to own a home but can't compete in this competitive market. I say all of this realizing that the land bank had a rocky beginning, this is not a secret. However, I do not do this as a moment to try to relitigate whether or not the land bank ought to exist. I'm happy to engage with any of you on that topic anytime. But the matter at hand is simply that we are a nonprofit, fully funded to do this work with similar projects already underway, who can guarantee the result of this home being fully renovated, back on the tax rolls, owner occupied at an affordable price with enforcement mechanisms to keep it affordable in the long term. I know that some of you might think that this property would be better auctioned and sold and I understand the appeal in theory. However, I would note two caveats. This property has been vacant for nearly forty years. It is in dire condition and the cost to rehab it very likely exceeds even the fair market value of the property. So a sale of that nature would do nothing to increase access to affordable housing and the property is truly worth very little. We are offering the full price of the back taxes, which is nearly twenty thousand dollars. Whether this property is sold via auction or common council resolution, which have both been suggested as alternatives to this, the outcome that the land bank can guarantee, simply and demonstrably, cannot be guaranteed from City Hall. Resolutions to dispose of surplus properties in the past have almost always included reverter clauses, generally requiring the new owner to have a C of O on the property within one to two years, be owner occupied, among other restrictions. However, there is no apparatus to actually enforce this, so these properties very, very often remain unoccupied or get demolished or get flipped for enormous profit at market rate prices. The land bank was created as a resource to actually do what the city has tried and been unsuccessful in doing on their own for many years. So I hope that you will see this as an opportunity to leverage this resource and grant us permission to buy this property. So this evening, I'm asking for your support in passing this resolution because I believe that it is the best pathway for this particular property. It is simply the right thing to do. Since the land bank's inception, we have been encouraged to operate under the assumption of a cooperative and collaborative relationship with city officials. I would urge you to remember, this is the one time in two years that we have asked for anything from this common council. And so in order to demonstrate that cooperation, I would sincerely ask for your support in this. We will do what we say we're going to do and I think these are outcomes that we can all get behind. So thank you very much for your time and both your conscience, I guess.
Thank you, Daniel. All right, our last speaker, and I've been working on making sure you can get in here, is Clark Richters. Clark. Hi, Clark.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yeah, there are some technical difficulties and when I called the number, I was in, but I couldn't hear anybody until I called back the second time.
We're pretty sure you're patient for coming back.
Right. No, I'm, I'm a sort of like, I mean, I've been doing this for years of, you know, working with, mostly with Kingston citizens, but more, more or less my passion of supporting open government, you know, putting stuff on, the whole council meeting on TV, which, as you're aware, I'm sure, has turned into, and just as, I'll just respect to the council, turned into a political football discussion, which really doesn't benefit the general public as far as getting the information that they're really needing out there, especially with the times that we're going through right now. Again, the station, the TV, channel twenty-three, is ran by Asopis. It is on. Unfortunately, it's not getting, I mean, there's several towns on board that collect funding taxes from the cable subscriber, over a half a million dollars. And the city of Kingston alone collects four hundred and ten thousand dollars in revenue from extra taxes from the cable slash spectrum, you know, agreement that they have, which is still being negotiated, from my understanding, since two thousand sixteen. Negotiations with Spectrum, I'm sure, are not easy. The mayor has always gave me credit for being an advocate, but that's it. I wish the mayor, because he has the power to do about, just about anything in the city of Kingston. And I could be wrong, but from my following civic government, it's either it goes his way or he doesn't want nothing to do with it, vice versa. As a council, your job is to utilize that franchise, I mean, even though it goes right to the general fund, but still, just a little bit of that franchise money going back into the station, instead of putting everything on Facebook, you know, because I've, I've took it upon myself as an advocate to download this meeting, the council meeting, and then put it on TV so people that don't have internet could see that, that whole government process. Well, I'm speaking right now. I'm able to speak, I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful that the technology worked out for me and I was able to get in there. So I, I would really encourage the council, I mean, I can't wait till we're all together again and I'm able to go there in person to speak. Because I really didn't take, I mean, I, since I was doing like uploading stuff to internet, you really take things for granted of how important it is to just a meeting here and there or whatever, or even like the police commission meeting. Because there's a lot going on right now. We're gonna just, gonna beat the whole, you know, the way things are going, if things don't change, we're gonna have to rely on, you know, the eye in the sky big brother watching our city. Because, you know, what else are you gonna do? It's like, yeah, you don't want enforcement or even you don't want, you want lax enforcement, but yet. you have to, you can't be afraid to walk to the store, right? On that, so, and the end of that, I really, as also, as a driver that's been around for a while, I would say that I really, I'm gonna keep my finger crossed when Broadway is done with the bike lanes, because I foresee that being another, you know, incident that's gonna be a tragedy, I hope not, but I don't, I don't support, I don't support the bike lanes, but it is what it is, I have to deal with it. I think the council really should, instead of educating the driver, because they think your driver has a license, they have insurance, there is no regulation for bicycles. I think you really gotta educate the bicyclists to follow the rules of the road. And I think you're really gonna accomplish a lot more instead of trying to educate the drivers. Because as a driver, I'm aware of the road, you know, the laws and that, but I foresee since then bicycle lanes or emblems have been put in the road, bicycle ticket for granted, like they're, you know, they're, it's their road and you're just following all of them. It's like, it's gotta be a shared effort there. And I think it really should, like an educational component to the bicyclists. Where, or even law enforcement on the bicyclists, because even though you're responsible when you're driving, it's up to them if they want to stop for a stop sign or an intersection. That, you know, or even saying somebody's crossing the street, that they, that, and then you gotta make up your mind if like, if it's only gonna be like pedalist bicycle owner, or are you gonna be allowed to have like electric scooters and stuff like that in a bicycle lane? So that's gonna be an educational process there. So with that, I would encourage you again to support your public access, to try to make it better, to inform your city. This meeting, I'm gonna try my best voluntarily to put this on public access so people can have a chance to watch this meeting. And I thank you.
Thank you, Clark. That ends our public speaking portion of the meeting. We now enter into claims and communications. Hearing no discussion, they will be on file in the clerk's office. Can I get a motion to dispense with the second reading of the general bills and pessay? Motion by Tony Davis, second by Patrick O'Reilly. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is adopted nine to zero. We now enter into report of committees, starting with resolution number sixty-nine.
Resolution sixty-nine of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the police department budget in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to cover the expense of fixed mounted license plate reads.
On the question? Alderman Tony Davis.
Yes, there was some discussion last night about these readers being able to view inside of the vehicles and, you know, people's vehicles. And I just want to state, and I believe it was stated last night, that this is not the purpose of these readers. These readers are only to be able to read the license plates of vehicles that are traveling through our city. And this will be another additional tool for the law enforcement to be able to use and to, you know, if there is a crime, to be able to use this information to be able to help solve that crime. And so I will be a yes vote on this, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Hearing no, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly.
Yeah, hi, Patrick O'Reilly. Plate readers. They read your license plate as you travel through, down the highway, through a city, through New York City, they track you. Now, they may not see what's inside the car, but the person who's the car registered to, of course, information is being tracked. So, you know, anytime the government is tracking you in any way whatsoever, we must be careful, we must be very careful. You know, what are the repercussions of this? Hopefully, they're all good. Can this information be used against us? Maybe. You know, who will be in control of this information? The police? Public officials? Politicians? We have to be careful, that's all I'm saying. When we do things like this, the council should not take anything like this lightly. Tracking people in any way is against our human nature. Basic human nature, no one else should be able to follow you, where you go, what you're doing, how often you do it, who you do it with. No one should be able to track you like that. Ever. That being said, we have a problem in our town, guns. Children being killed. Terrible things are happening. So this is the result, this is our, this is the way we have to fight back. We have to fight back with with tracking every individual that comes through the town. Terrible, terrible, terrible thing we're doing, hopefully it's for good results. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, anybody else on the question? Alderman Michelle Hirsch.
Yes, I'd just like to state for the record that I was a no vote the last time when we voted on this in December and I am still a no vote. Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Rita Worthington.
Yeah, I believe too, I was a no vote on this when we voted for this. However, I've since changed my mind as we've been having, you know, I've since talked to the chief about all of this. We've been having multiple, multiple meetings about public safety and the police's role and the community's role in this. And I think we've come to a mutual understanding. I think that, you know, all of us are on the same side as we want to see that our city is safe. And while we may have different methods at arriving at that, I think we all have the same goal. So I think I've come to the decision to change my vote from December.
Thank you, anybody else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. If you just keep your thumbs up so I could get through it, all in favor? Opposed? Resolution is, motion is adopted eight to one. The opposition vote is Alderman Michelle Hirsch. Moving to resolution number seventy, please.
Resolution seventy of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amending section three nine zero dash nine seven, schedule fourteen. No parking or standing at any time of the Kingston City Code on North Street and amending section three nine zero dash nine nine, schedule sixteen, parking prohibited certain hours on North Street.
On the question? Hearing Alderman Patrick O'Reilly.
Hi, Patrick O'Reilly. Ward seven, Alderman. You know, the reason we're doing this because there's no parking down there. We give the, we give the Sinek Hudson a huge piece of land. And it's a wonderful thing, you know, what would we do without Central Park in New York City? It's a wonderful thing, but no parking. You know, and the poor people down there on North Street have to deal with the brunt of that right now. So now we have to close off half the street. Some of the people won't be able to park in front of their houses any longer. You know, there was an opportunity at the end of North Street to make some parking, we didn't do it. Now people have to cross through a piece of land that may be or maybe not. People might let us use it if they don't get mad at us this week. They seem to be a little mad at us lately, down at the Brickyard. You know, they threw down some mulch so people can walk through from the parking lot. You know, and I kind of blame Sinek Hudson for not putting, you know, a parking into place down there for us. You know, and the fact, the other fact is that the city of Kingston gave this land generously. And we got the least amount of access to this park. They need to change that, we need to change that, we need to stand up, up for that and get the citizens of Kingston access to this park, which is really our park. It's our land, that was the last land we had to expand our city on. Do you realize that, everybody? The last piece of land that we had to expand the city of Kingston upon. And we gave it away. And I hope, I hope it works out great, I hope, you know, I love parks. And I hope this park is the most wonderful thing that ever happened. But why aren't we getting access to it in the city of Kingston? We all need to think about that, thank you very much.
I did see that Alderman Steve Shabba had his hand up earlier, Steve, are you there? He's frozen, all right.
I'm here, can you hear me? I don't know if you can hear me, everything's freezing up again.
Can you hear you, Steve?
You can, okay. Yeah, as I said last night, I mean, this is gonna be an issue for a while, we we need parking down there, very simple. You know, this is a good project, Sinek Hudson bought this property. It wasn't a gift to them, I don't know that they owe anybody anything. I think in their own best interest, they're gonna have to put in some parking. We're gonna need parking for the Empire, you know, down that way. I don't think, I will vote in favor of this because I don't think it's fair to put the burden on the residents of North Street to have people parked in front of their houses, rest parking, you know, hopefully we have some parking lots that are gonna be added to Kingston Point and refurbished, so hopefully that, that will be, you know, a plan, plan B, I guess. And I believe, you know, the Hudson, Hutton Brickyard people have verbally told, hopefully between the Kingston Point Beach and across the street at the ball field, there will be ample parking. I believe, I've spoken with the Sinek Hudson people, I know that the plans are for a parking lot, but I don't have details about that. But anyway, that's really not what we're voting on tonight, so I will be voting yes on this for the no parking.
And just so you know, I did send out an email earlier about reaching out to Sinek Hudson, I didn't get a response yet, but I do expect one about the parking that they may or may not be creating and will let everybody know when I hear back. But on this question, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number seventy-one, please.
Resolution seventy-one of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the Parks and Recreation Department of unspent allocated rec fee reserve funds in the amount of sixty-two thousand two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars and eight cents to cover the expense of the construction of the Kingston Point Park plate.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Our motion is adopted nine to zero, moving to resolution number seventy-two, please.
Resolution seventy-two of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the grants management department in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars to cover the expense of a traffic safety campaign consultant.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, Alderman Tony Davis and then Alderman Patrick O'Reilly.
Yes, and thank you, Madam President. And after thinking about this a little bit more last night, and I'm gonna be a no vote on this. And I would just like to see with the more detailed allocation of what these funds would be and also to get an indication of what a more elaborate plan would be in regard to this. And I don't want to be surprised in regard to later on if we allocate these funds and that, that it's coming back for more funds and more funds. And for the taxpayers, I would like to, again, have a more detailed plan of what an overall program consultant or whatever, and campaign, and would look like and what the price would be. So then we would have a more detailed allocation, analysis of what this might look like going forward. So I'm gonna be a no vote on this, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly. And then Alderman Michelle Hirsch after.
Hi, Patrick O'Reilly, thanks. You know, this wasn't a tremendously expensive project. And now at the end of it, at the very end of it, they say it was, oh, by the way, look, we need another thirty-five thousand bucks because we wanna do a traffic study campaign. Or hire a traffic study consultant. Well, what, are you kidding me? Wasn't that in the, in the cost of the project? I mean, didn't they know they would need that if they even do need it? Come on, you know, that's part of the project, they shouldn't be coming back to the citizens of Kingston and asking for it now at the end of the project, oh, and by the way, we need thirty-five thousand. Oh, it's not just thirty-five thousand, we're gonna need another thirty-five thousand and then we're gonna need another thirty-five thousand because we wanna get this campaign rolling here in the city of Kingston. I understand people need to be told about bike lanes and how to navigate bike lanes and things like that. And I'm just thinking like, where, why wasn't this included in the price of the road when we, when they were talking about it years ago? This never came up, this is another add-on, another tag-on to what, what those prices are. It's, it's, it's not a good, it's not a good thing to do. You know, surprise the city of Kingston people with add-ons at the end of a project like this. They should have thought of this. The engineers should have thought of it, they needed it. I'm sure, you know, where were the engineers when they, when they had their price? They should have put in there, hey, by the way, this could be unsafe. And we need thirty-five thousand dollars to educate people of the city of Kingston. Oh, by the way, we might need another thirty-five and another thirty-five to get that education done. So we might need a hundred and some odd thousand dollars to get this education done after the fact that we put in our design plans, we have the best people in the, in the state working on this, we have the best engineers working on this, we had forward-thinking people working on this, and now, and now they want some more money from us, come on, man. This is a this is a no vote for me. I don't like being, I don't like being, you know, blindsided like this at the end of a project, it should have been included. Is it necessary, maybe, some necessity to it? But they shouldn't be doing this to us now, it's a no vote for me.
Thank you, Alderman Michelle Hirsch, please.
While I don't dispute that a safety campaign would be worthwhile, I just believe that this should have Uh, while I don't dispute that a, um, safety campaign would be worthwhile, I just believe that this should have an RFP and with a set amount and scope of work and what we are looking for precisely. And then we'll also target children, um, the way, uh, you know, kids aren't on social media. Kids aren't going to be on Engage Kingston. Um, I just think it needs to be a little more, uh, fleshed out and, uh, realization of what the actual cost will be and so that it's just not open-ended. Thank you. So I would be a no vote.
We have Alderman Rennie Scott Childress and then Jeffrey and Steve.
I hope you can hear me. The, um, the issue seems to be a, a concern over the open-endedness. So I would like to make a motion that we send this back to committee for further consideration.
There's a motion on the floor to send it back. Is there a second? Uh, Alderman, second sit. On the question of sending it back to table, is there any discussion? Or sending it back to committee? Excuse my wrong language there. All right. So I'll call for the vote and this is the motion to send it back to committee. All in favor? Opposed? All right. Motion to send this back to committee passes seven to two. The two no votes were Alderman Don Tolloman and Alderman Doug Coop. Hi, thank you. Moving now to resolution number seventy-three, please.
Resolution seventy-three of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to expend funds in the first instance for ADLN grant number two-one SG two-zero-six-four from Enterprise Community Partners Incorporated for implementation of anti-displacement strategies in the city of Kingston.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to resolution number seventy-four, please.
Resolution seventy-four of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the transfer of one-twenty-four to one-twenty-six Franklin Street. SPO five-six-point-one-zero-eight dash three dash four to the Kingston City Land Bank for rehabilitation, redevelopment and disposition and recommending a negative declaration of environmental significance.
On the question? Uh, Alderman Tony Davis.
I'm Tony Davis here. And I did send out, um, it was some questions about the property and, and the tax rolls. I got that information. I reached out to our, our assessor, Dan Baker, last night. And he got me back that information. I did pass it for, pass it forward to all the, all the, all the people. I hope you received that. And I also drove past that, uh, particular property and to see what it looked like and what the configuration of the land was. And so I know cause yesterday came up questions where we might be able to sell this and et cetera, et cetera. I, from my view, point of view, look at this property that's been dormant for, you know, X amount of years. And we, you know, we would not be able to, I can't see anybody buying that and re, and rehabilitating that property set for the Kingston Land Bank. And if anything, they were probably knocked that property down. It would be, uh, this is an empty lot. And if they, if somebody purchased it or just held on to it. And so, uh, you know, as it stated before, uh, if we return this and house, it returns, we give it to Kingston Land Bank, it returns on the tax rolls. And it would provide opportunities for affordable housing for first-time homeowners. And, and again, as it stated, it sat dormant for so, over twenty years. And if we sell it to a higher bidder, as which was discussed yesterday, and as it stayed, the property could just sit there dormant. It doesn't mean that they have to do anything with it. Doesn't mean that they have to make it affordable housing or first-time homeowner. And so, uh, or they could just tear it down and just leave it as an empty lot. And so i- in, in that reason, and I feel, feel that and the Kingston Land Trust and with the go on their trust that they're going to move with these houses. And we as a council have to, you know, keep up on them to make sure and that they're doing that. And that, and I'm going to be a yes vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Anybody else on the question? Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch and then Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell.
Yes, I just want to say that, um, the land bank still doesn't have any proven track record of housing a family. Um, three how homes are being renovated at this time. Um, the community was asked to submit applications, uh, to apply for the homes by March twenty-seventh. And because of per, um, parameters that were placed on the applications and the makeup of the families, we don't even have anyone um, lined up to take the three homes that are already being worked on. So, um, I'm just going to be a no vote on transferring another piece of property to them at this time. Thank you.
Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I will be a yes vote on this. I think, um, as Tony expressed and also, uh, Daniel Cantor said before, um, selling this to the highest bidder would, uh, would be cost prohibitive, uh, to, uh, the, the cost of uh, rehabbing this house would be probably higher than, than what the house would, would be able to resell for. So uh, it, it would likely end up being torn down. Uh, with the land bank, we have an opportunity to have this, uh, repaired uh, at no cost to the city and put in the hands of a first-time home buyer and kept affordable in perpetuity. So, uh, for those reasons, I think this is a good idea and I'll be a, a yes vote. Thank you.
Anyone else on that question? Hearing no, uh, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly. Always wait until I take a breath to, to move on. Alderman.
Sorry about that, Andrea. I'm just, uh, I like to think things over right to the last minute, you know? So land bank, geez, that didn't turn out the way we thought it was, did it? You know, it was a good, it, it was a great idea. But guess what? Property values have gone skyrocketing. Right? These homes, these, that they're going to put people in that were maybe two-hundred-thousand-dollar homes are worth four-hundred-thousand dollars now. They're doubled. Who can afford taxes on four-hundred-thousand-dollar homes? I don't know, but they don't, they don't seem like, if they can afford taxes on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home, it might not be the people that we need to be servicing here. So that's a problem for the land bank. The problem is, it was a great idea when prices were, were stagnant. And we needed, we needed to do something with these homes. That's not necess, that's not as, it's not as necessary. I'm not saying it's not necessary. I'm saying it's not as necessary. Which means that the land bank isn't as necessary as it used to be when we were in trouble with the zombie homes and all that. Now we have people flipping homes, buying homes. At one day, they're going for sale. One day they're gone. The next day, people are getting higher prices than they're even asking on their homes. It's, it's, it's crazy. So I'm concerned about a few things with this home. What's the value of this home? Well, no one can tell me. No one, this council can tell me the value of this home. What, what, uh, and, uh, no, not, not the, um, not what our assessor has, but an assessment of present value homes selling in that neighborhood, comparing them to that price. That's like, that's the accept what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, uh, the taxes being paid on that home right now. That's something different. That's something totally different than the value of that home right now in this market. So I'm talking about the market value. We don't even know what that is. So, you know, what are we accomplishing here? We're putting people in homes, right, that are may even, they might not even be able to afford because the taxes are too, going to be too high for them. Because the house's value, when the, when the assessor comes around and assesses the property, they're going to say, oh, you're in a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home. You know, that's, that's, that's going to be a problem. And that's a problem for the people on that. And I, and I'm watching, and I would say we need to watch out for the people we put into these homes. Can they afford to live in these homes now because of the value of real estate today? Or, you know, and so, so again, maybe the land bank was a great idea, but maybe it's not such a great idea anymore. The other thing is this, what's the value of that property? Could we, could we use that money that the market value of that property? Could we use that money for better use to house a people in affordable housing elsewhere in that ne, even in that neighborhood, buying other properties with the money we make off of the sale of that, uh, property? These are things we have to consider too. We can't look at the short game here. You know, if I, if I think right now at this point, that, that, um, they are actually part of the housing problem. Because we're not getting these houses back on the tax rolls quick. They said they were going to take all these houses and then they come back a year, two years later and say, oh no, we only want the cream of the crop. So they take the cream of the crop off of our houses and they say, oh, these other ones we don't want anymore. This is the land bank. These are the people we're dealing with. Telling us, oh, we're going to take care of everything in the beginning and then they changed their tune. That's, that's no lie right there as we all know. So, uh, this land bank is, it's, it's, it's rewards are diminishing and we have to take a look at that. We have to see, is this land bank really worth it for the city of Kingston? Is this, is this really helping us? Or is it actually causing a housing problem? Are they part of the problem? And when they become part of the problem, that's not a good thing. So I'm a no vote transferring to these, to this land bank. As Michelle said, they have no history of, of, uh, of, uh, you know, housing people in our city. Uh, to me, it sounds like, uh, you know, with the current economic conditions, with the current economic conditions, this project is no longer as feasible or as worthy as it used to be. And as a matter of fact, it may be hurting our, um, chances at getting people the help that they actually need. So I'm a no. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rennie Scott Childress.
We have a responsibility in the city of Kingston to help those who have difficult times. If government doesn't help those who have difficult times, first and foremost, then all we're doing is helping the wealthy to get wealthier. The land bank has the proven capacity to make renovation happen. They have taken three houses. They've begun to renovate them. They've got them now going. And it's exciting to see the house that's around the corner from me. It looks so much better than it did six months ago. Crucial thing to remember here is that we will be receiving twenty-thousand dollars for back taxes from this property. That's more than we would probably receive in any kind of sale. First off, this property has a crushed sewer. It's going to cost at least twenty-thousand dollars right there to repair that. Second of all, it has serious issues on the inside. It's going to require a lot more money. The assessed value is ninety-seven thousand dollars. And so we would probably not see anything like that. Plus, we don't have the apparatus for renovating a house like this. That's the beauty of the land bank. They are able to take properties, renovate them, and then make them available to low-income families, to first-time home buyers. Moreover, when they do this, they have a proven program that's worked in all kinds of places so that about would they be able to afford?
I don't know if you could hear me, but it seems like your phone.
The assessment on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house is completely moot here. Ready, ready to go. They've got all the administrative, uh, apparatus that they need. The title on this particular property is, is clear. That's not going to tangle them up like it has on so many of their other properties that they've looked at. I believe that the city of Kingston has to help those who are trying to make a go of it. Those who are hard-working neighbors and who just want a chance to be able to move into a home in this really hot market. These are the folks we're trying to help, not the people who are going to buy four-hundred-thousand, five-hundred-thousand-dollar houses. Let's help our good neighbors who work with a house like this.
Thank you, Rennie. You were cutting out in, in a little bit there. So I'm assuming you're done, right? All right. Anybody else on the question? I have older woman Rita Worthington and Tony Davis and Patrick.
Uh, thank you, President Shaw. Yeah. So I'm just going to agree with, uh, Rennie and all those that are in favor of transferring the, the, uh, property to the land bank. Um, you know, while the land bank, we may feel like they don't have a proven record. Unfortunately, the city of Kingston does have a proven record, whereas these properties have been sitting, uh, off the rolls for forty-some-odd years. And, uh, if you drive through Kingston, you will see all of the zombie properties that the city owns and they're just sitting there. So we're not making any money on those. So I think, I don't think that track record is that great either. Um, secondly, there is a house that is about two houses down from where I'm living and the land bank is renovating that. Um, they said that they would be renovating it and they stuck to their word. So I think that they're on the right track with regard to when they say that they're going to do something. You know, we all, there's always some mishaps in anything that we say that we're going to do. You know, but, um, I see it. It's, it's right before my eyes, um, where they're renovating this home. Rennie just said that they're renovating a home from, in his neighborhood. So we see that it is happening. They've said that they can take this property on Franklin Street and that they can start immediate renovations and they can put a family in that home. Um, I think Dan Cantor's, you know, answered the questions that were raised last night in his presentation tonight or in his public comments tonight. Um, there's no way that if we put this out for bid or if we have this, we, we sell this to a developer, that they're going to have strict guidelines with putting an affordable, uh, some affordable prerequisites on that house. I don't think that that's going to happen because they're going to have to take a lot of money to renovate that home and they're going to want to make a profit. Who wouldn't want to make a profit after putting so much money into it? If any of you have driven by that house and saw that house and saw what kind and the amount of money that it's going to take to renovate that property, anyone that does that is going to want some kind of return. The land bank is not asking for that. All they're asking for is that we renovate that property and we make it affordable housing. Um, again, um, I'm, I'm baffled by some of these conversations that we have with regard to what we should do and what we shouldn't do. I really am. But with that said, I'm a yes on this.
Thank you, Rita. I, we have Tony and Patrick for their second comments and I'll call and you're done. Um, so Alderman Tony Davis.
Tony Davis here. And again, uh, I'm going to be a yes vote for a bet, you know, as some people were stating that and the land bank is going to, um, create a more of a problem. And what more of a problem? And again, the city has had this property for forty years and no one's purchased it. And to sell it to the highest bidder and then be able to take the money and go and purchase other properties. And where are those other properties? And, and, and I mean, uh, are they housed or are there places where we can put affordable housing in? And, and for first-time homeowners? And we all know in the city, and it's been stated many times that there's a lack of affordable housing, our first-time homeowners. It's a lack of housing for all, all incomes that we know affordable housing. And if we can't do it in those areas and where people can stay and, 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 and stay in their communities, and then what are you doing? And like, it's been stated, the city of Kingston can't do this. Where are we going to put this on? DPW would do it? Uh, put more work on them to re, we have a, a, a place or what are we going out now and going to give a RFP to the local contractor and to renovate this house? And we've already seen with those prices, the price is going to be higher and higher. And we've already talked about the pricing of, uh, wooden materials and how it was going up. And so weekend to this business is going to be as, as really hot. And, you know, the price is just going up. Kingston, like you said, the land bank is not exiting for us for any of that. They're just exiting us to turn it over to us and give them the opportunity to rehab, have this building and give it to a first-time homeowner, owner, affordable housing. And, and, and that's what we should be doing. So again, as I stated before, and I'm going to be a yes vote.
All right. Thank you. I have a little bit of a queue here. So just so you all know who I've seen, uh, Patrick, Don, Michelle and Steve. Alright, thank you. I have a little bit of a queue here. So just so you all know who I've seen, Patrick, Don, Michelle and Steve. So next up is for the second comment, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly.
Can you come back to me, Andrew?
Or Alderman Don Tolloman?
Hi, Don Tolloman here. I'm, I'm just want to respond to Michelle's comment. You know, I think Michelle is, um, you know, she's, she's correct and being frustrated that there's been slow progress. But seems to be penalizing them and saying, well, let's wait to see if Apple perform more first before giving them this property. And I think, you know, while I understand that approach, I would rather take a more positive approach than say that, you know, they've come a long way. They've gotten their stuff together and Daniel Cantor in particular has made a lot of progress in understanding the issues and in understanding what it's going to take to make this happen and happen successfully. And I think we all owe, you know, gratitude and a shout out to Daniel Cantor for sticking with it. And doing the hard work that very few people would, would volunteer to do. So I'd rather reward the effort, reward the progress and focus on the possibility. Rather than the, the initial rough start that they had. So I'm going to vote yes for it.
Doctor, you're ready. Older woman, Michelle Hirsch.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. You know, uh, putting this out to the highest bidder is not the only game in town. The land bank is not the only game in town. There are also other avenues. That uh, offer homes to low income, first time home buyers, including youth builds. That is actually um, a program that benefits many, many people in our community. It helps students that have dropped out of school. Helps them focus on education, giving them construction skills, training, manufacturing, training. There are many, many other avenues, but the land bank is not the only avenue in which to offer a home to first time low income home buyers. So I'm just still a no vote. Thank you.
Alderman Steve Shabbitt. Steve, are you there? We've just lost you. I'm going to I just saw Jeffrey's hand go up, so I'm going to move to him first. Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morel, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to point out a few things. The, the issue that the land, that the people who buy this house won't be able to afford the taxes. Uh, I believe the land bank and its bylaws already has mechanisms to address that. About that, the fact that it was said that they only took the cream of the crop, that is inaccurate. They in fact, uh, just took the houses and the, the only properties that they refused to take was the vacant land because they are not. The, the land bank is, uh, was created to rehab vacant properties, not to build on vacant land. And uh, the last point I want to make is that they are not in fact a drain on the city. They have funneled from the grant monies that they have received. They have funneled, I believe, close to a million dollars to the city in salaries. Back tax payments, et cetera. So uh, just to point those few things out. Thank you.
We have Steve back here. Alderman Steve Shabbitt. For comment?
Thank you. This is happening at the most inopportune times. Seems like every time you call on me, everything crashes. Okay, so I'm listening to everybody and to be honest, sometimes, you know, the money sounds tempting, you know, to sell a house and put the money back and, you know, in the general fund. However, you know, this is a house as numerous people have said, been sitting there forty years. The work to get this up to speed is going to be so substantial. I have a hard time imagining anybody's going to want to buy it. And if they do, it could sit there. It could sit there. They could tear it down. It could be a vacant lot. There's no, we got numerous things on the agenda tonight that there are no guarantees of anything. At least this, in my opinion, there's a possibility that something very, the most experienced, but you know, we have to, at some point, we have to move forward. We're either going to dismantle this. Or we have to presume they're, they're going to do what we asked them to. This was the philosophy of it, from my understanding, that we were going to take these, these projects. Rehab them, get people hopefully from our area that have been here. It doesn't matter that, that need a place to live, get them back on the tax rolls. And when we used to sell our properties, the first thing we wanted to know is can you pay the back taxes? Well, this is the first thing. We're getting the back taxes on this. $19,000 worth. You know, I really think the positives outweigh the possibility of negatives in this. You know, I think we got an opportunity to put somebody in a house that, that can obviously use it. If we have a developer buy it and sink a half a million dollars in this place, who's going to afford to live there? Certainly, it's not going to be affordable housing, that's for sure. So you know, my, my feeling is if anybody buys it, they're either going to sit on it. You know, this is not a high priced house. We saw the information Tony sent and thank you, Tony, by the way, for doing, doing the homework. You know, it, it is not, you know, one of these old Victorians where somebody is going to come and throw down $500,000 in two days. You know, this is, this is a whole different ballgame. And this is a chance to make a difference in a neighborhood, make a difference to some people. And yeah, sometimes the money does sound tempting, but, but you know, you know, I really want to go with something that I, you know, I'm hoping is going to be a positive here. So yes, I'm going to vote yes.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else on the question? Alderman Patrick O'Reilly.
Hi, Patrick O'Reilly. I drove past that house today. I drove past the house almost every day of my life. I know that house well. I know the property well. I know the neighborhood well. Obviously, that neighborhood, if you know that neighborhood, Fair Street has gone crazy. Don, you live on Fair Street. Your house, the price of your house, you probably doubled it already. So from what you paid for it. The uh, properties around there, vacant lots in Kingston, uh, you know, are, are doubling in price, tripling in price. It's, it's, it's really incredible growth spurt we're having right now in Kingston. And Steve, um, you know, you, you're, you're a public official. You just can't say, you know, the money means nothing. This isn't your money. It's the taxpayers' money. Or the money, you know, it's, we, we can, we can afford this. You know, this is taxpayers' money. We have to do the responsible thing with the taxpayers' money every single time. Not just when we feel like it. Because we feel like we want this to happen. You know, we have to look at all aspects of this and, you know, is giving the land bank this house the right thing? You know, maybe it is, maybe it is, you know. I'm also confused about the fact that, you know, if this place is so expensive to renovate, if it's going to be such an expensive project to renovate. Why, why would you do it? You know, why not take that money? That's obviously going to be uh, used on renovations that are, that sound forty year old wooden building? I mean, that's been sitting vacant for forty years. That can't be good. There's got to be mold and rot and pipes that are busted, like you said, $20,000 worth of pipes are busted. I mean, this is all total gut job. You know, we have to think about the bottom line here, you know, where could that money be spent so that the citizens of Kingston who need housing are getting it? Are we dumping it into places that, uh, are we, are we spending that money frivolously? On over expensive property rehab? When we could be building new properties? We already take care, we already have a Kingston Housing Authority. It's not like we don't have people that take care of housing in our city already. We act like the Kingston Land Bank is our only avenue. It's not our only avenue to help our people of the city of Kingston. We have well established, award winning people in, in the, um, uh, our housing department already. That, that, I think they, they, they do a fantastic job of housing low income people in our city so far. So these, these things that we're doing now, these, these project houses. These aren't housing a lot of people. You're saying three, three houses are getting done. What are the costs of those three houses in the end? What's the market value of those three houses? How many apartments? How many homes could we have provided for people in the city of Kingston? Three times as many, four times as many, five times as many homes? At the cost of what we're paying? So Steve, you can't just say, you know, it's going to house some people and, and it's the right thing to do. The right thing to do is house as many people as we can. And give them a home and give them dignity. Not just two or three people. Or two or three, you know, families. We should house as many as we can. What are we doing? Have we lost track? We say we have a housing crisis. We say we have people living on the streets. And here we are spending all this money on three homes, four homes. Are, are we, are we, uh, are we thinking straight? I don't think so. We need to check ourselves. We need to check the land bank. We need to make sure that, uh, you know, this, this stuff's feasible. I mean, it even sounds like the land, land bank, even investing in this property. It, it's going to be an extremely expensive cost. At, at what reward? At what reward? Come on. Let's put, let's take our money, give it to people that need it. And give it to the most amount of people that could use it. You know, help these people. You say you're, you're, you're helping people in the housing crisis. I, I don't see it. I don't, I don't see it. I, Rennie says, oh, the house around the corner. That house around the corner, people were lining up to buy that house around the corner for big money. And now it's a hundred thousand dollars more than it was, maybe a hundred and fifty. That house is a very expensive house, you know, in, in that now with the, with the cost of things. I don't know who's going to be able to afford the taxes on that thing. Or if they even should be, have to afford, we're going to put people in there, they have to afford the taxes on this thing? Come on now. Let's help people, not hurt, you know, not, not. Let's help as many people as we possibly can. This is not working. This is not the way. Thank you.
Alright, so two more hands. This is both your second time speaking, so I'll go with, I saw Rennie's hand first and then Rita. So Alderman Rennie Scott Childress.
I'm sorry. Did you say it's time I can speak now? I'm sorry, I have like two different devices going. Did you say it's, it's my time to speak? Okay. I don't believe anyone here said that this is the only method for providing affordable housing in Kingston. We have the Kingston Housing Authority, as Patrick O'Reilly pointed out. With the land bank and we have other approaches too. Youth Build does great work. So does Habitat for Humanity. But they don't have the resources to work on this house. They passed on it. It's not the kind of thing that they do, this kind of rehabilitation. Moreover, it's not going to cause the city of Kingston to die. Moreover, we're being paid $20,000 for this piece of property. So this is putting money into the city's coffers. Plus, it's going to return this house to the tax rolls, which is going to put more money into the city's coffers. On top of that, the land bank has put in a million dollars, close to a million dollars in various forms into the city's coffers. So this is one approach to housing. And it's an important approach because it allows hardworking Kingston neighbors to purchase a home for the first time in their lives. At a cost that they can afford with protections so that they will not go under, so that they will be able to pay the taxes. The taxes that any other person would pay on the assessed value, but with the assistance of the land bank and its programs. So this is grant money that's being used to do this refurbishing. That's how the land bank works. They refurbish a house that brings money in and because they're a nonprofit, they get to put that money right back into producing more housing of a single family home type. So what we're talking about here is creating more housing at the single family home level. We have other kinds of housing that we're providing. We've done a lot of work to make it possible for RUCO, for example, to build new housing out at the Alm's House for seniors who need affordable housing and who need some mental health care. We made it possible for RUCO to build East Square and the Art, the Artist Facility. We made it possible for KNM, KNR rather, to purchase the two senior facilities for affordable housing at Yasmin Towers and the Governor Clinton. We do a lot in different sectors of the market. This is simply one approach that's important for single family home purchases for renovation. And it brings both money to the city, so the city doesn't pay a dime. We make money off the deals. Because the land bank pays off the back taxes and makes good houses that also will put money into our tax coffers. That's why I think the land bank is a good deal for this kind of project. It's the perfect sort of thing for them to do. And I hope that we will vote on this in favor of it.
Thank you.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you call me, Madam President? Okay, so, um, so yes, I was actually going to say what Rennie said as far as the city not paying a dime for this. Actually, the city is getting money for this because they're paying the back taxes on this. Secondly, I also wanted to note that 94 Furnace Street in the city of Kingston was sold by the city with a reverter that it'd be C, have a CEO and an owner occupied single, single family in one year. They demolished it and it's now currently listed for $73,000. The buyer bought it for $1,000. We lost money on that. Thirty nine Van Buren Street, sold by the city with a clause to have a CEO by March 2018. It remains boarded and with absolutely no plan at all because of the reverter clause. So this is a no brainer. We're losing money by keeping these fam, keeping these properties off the tax road, tax rolls, boarded up, blights to midtown per se, other parts of the city as well. But there's four in midtown right now. And uh, we heard Dan New Cantor say that they are known as blights to the city. And so I just, I don't see the track record. The, there's an unproven, we mentioned the unproven, unproven track record of the land bank. You all, please tell me what the city is doing with these houses right now to generate some income.
Thank you. Just for the record, we, you've already spoken twice, so the only option would be to make a motion to open the floor. Is there anybody else who would like to speak who hasn't spoken twice or you can make a motion to open the floor? Alderman Doug Coop?
I moved the question.
What was that?
I'd like to move the question.
So I will call for the vote. All in favor?
What are we, what are we voting on? This is the resolution?
So Alyssa, can you please read the resolution again?
I just wanted to make sure we were voting on the resolution. I'm sorry.
This is Resolution seventy four.
Resolution seventy four of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the transfer of 124, 126 Franklin Street. SBL 56.108 DAB. SBL five-six-point-one-oh-eight dash three dash four to the Kingston City Land Bank for rehabilitation, redevelopment, and disposition, and recommending a negative declaration of environmental significance.
Thank you. All in favor, keep your thumbs up, please. Opposed? Okay, resolution is adopted seven to two. The opposition votes were Alderman Patrick O'Reilly and Alderman Michelle Hirsch. Moving to Resolution Number Seventy-Five, please.
Resolution Seventy-Five of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the implementation of the updated amended investment policy for the city of Kingston.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number Seventy-Six, please.
Resolution Seventy-Six of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer from contingency in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to cover the city's share of funding for the Lights On Initiative as per attached.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number Seventy-Seven, please.
Resolution Seventy-Seven of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer from contingency in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to fund a gun violence prevention program.
Question? Hearing no discussion, our Alderman Patrick O'Reilly and then Alderman Michelle Hirsch?
Hey, Patrick O'Reilly, how you doing? The Snug program sounds great, you know? Starting where, uh, it all begins. Right? Where does violence come from? What triggers violence? What triggers people to be violent? What are the causes? What are the root causes of, uh, the violence that erupts later on in their lives? I think it's a great idea to, um, go back to where it or it originates from. And then try to help people at that point before it becomes an issue. Sounds like a great program. Uh, I, and I talked to, uh, Alderwoman Worthington about it, and it does sound like a great program. I, I do have some concerns that it's not the actual Snug program, though. Uh, I would like to hear some comments on that tonight. Uh, I, from what I understand, it's, it's a copy of it, or maybe even a, um, something different, uh, from, from what I've understood. I, I was hoping someone could, uh, fill me in on exactly, uh, who the people are that are going to be running it, uh, what their experience is at, at, uh, dealing with, uh, this top mental illness and, and violence. And, um, I just, uh, have concerns. If it is the true Snug program, then I, I think it's, it's great from what I can understand. But if it's not, then, then what is? So that's my concern tonight. I hope so, hopefully somebody can shed some light on that.
Thank you, Patrick. Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm all in favor of having, um, the real Snug program that is run by DCJS. I did reach out to DCJS. Um, I spoke with the Director of New York State Division of Criminal Justice on, for their Snug outreach program. And they have not been approached. And I am highly concerned that we will be causing more of a problem in our community by doing something that is not the real program, that is not the real evidence-based program, that does not have the proper oversight, the proper training. And my understanding from speaking with DCJS, they do not use anyone that has had former drug problems or former addictions or is in recovery to be violence interrupters. So I am highly concerned that we will also be damaging our ability to receive the grants and the program here in the city. I truly care. I, I care because I want the real thing. I don't want other people to be hurt. I don't want innocent people to be putting themselves in the middle of gang violence and that we have helped fund and have more people hurt in this city. Our city deserves to have the real program and real, a real evidence-based program and to help fight the problems that we are having here. I think it is best that we wait and put together the real Snug program and then move forward. Thank you.
Alderwoman Rita Worthington?
Thank you, uh, President. So, so, um, to answer, uh, Patrick's question, it's a, it's a neighborhood violence prevention program. Right? So I'm not going to, um, reiterate what I said last night in caucus. You know, I said all of those comments, so I'm not going to repeat those. Um, but I will say though, is I think that the coordinator of Snug, uh, one of the coordinators or one of the directors, Deborah Long, in addition to David McNamara from Samadi Drug Rehabilitation Program, will be quite offended, um, uh, with us saying that, uh, they are not the real thing. So I would just suggest that maybe you contact them as they are the ones that introduced this program to us in the first place. And after having a meeting with them, um, and going over everything, they are the ones that gave me information about it. And so, um, if you don't think that it's the real thing, or it's, it's a copycat of, uh, an evidence-based program, you know, reach out to, reach out to them as well. Hopefully you know how to get in touch with David McNamara. He's over at the, uh, Clinton Avenue Church. Um, but I think they would be quite offended with us calling them copycats. But, um, once again, um, I think you all know my feelings about this, so I'm a yes on it.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Alderman Tony Davis?
Alderman Tony Davis here. And I want to, uh, first thank, uh, Alderwoman Rita Worthington for all her legwork and getting information in regard to this program. And as somebody stated earlier, it might have been a speaker. And we need to open our eyes, our eyes and our hearts into the gun violence that's happening all over our city. And the Snug program, and will not be the solution to all the problems, but it's a start, it is a start in discussing the problem. And so, and I'm going to be a yes vote on this. And, and because, again, as I stated, I believe it's, um, going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Alderman Steve Shabbitt?
Yeah, thank you. As I said before, we, we got several topics here. You know, people talking about guarantees. Um, I've heard conversations around the community. I've been involved in a couple of conversations, uh, with the Lights On program and, and this program that, well, who knows? There's no guarantee this is going to work. Well, of course, there's no guarantee anything is going to work. But these are, are very positive programs in a time where there's a, a lot of negativity going on, you know? You know, whoever, whoever they want to blame for all the gun violence that's going on. You know, here's a couple of positive steps, you know? Are they guaranteed to work? Of course not. You know, we don't know, you know, whether they're going to work. Wouldn't that be nice if we knew that? You know, just, I mean, I don't necessarily want to dismiss this because it's not a true Snug program. I mean, you know, we listen to these people speak and, you know, it, it certainly sounds like a positive at this point. Um, and, you know, hope for something positive to come out of this. You know, the same with the Lights On. I know everybody voted and, you know, but, but, you know, that's a really positive thing. Hey, it could fizzle out after six months, who knows? You know, but at least somebody's putting themselves on the line to put these programs together. We heard from Rita last night, you know? I mean, she's so passionate about this, you know? And, you know, it's happening all around us. You know, some of us have lost people. Um, you know, and it's not a good thing. You don't know what to say to somebody who's less, lost somebody from, you know, from drugs or gun violence or anything else. You know, you're, you're tongue-tied, you know? But here's some, here's some positive measures that somebody's bringing forward. And I appreciate, you know, I know everybody's thanking Rita and I, you know, I want to give her my, my kudos too here, you know, for bringing these things to the forefront, you know? Oh, I think there are going to be positive programs here in the city. Um, so I'm going to vote yes on it, you know? Again, you know, I want to take a chance, you know? It's sometimes it's not about the dollars and cents, you know? Sometimes it's about putting your faith in something and, you know, hoping for a positive result. So I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Hearing no, uh, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly?
I was waiting for you to breathe again. Yeah, I mean, Steve, you're absolutely right. I mean, we do need some positive stuff going on in the city, um, with this. And, you know, anything we can do, uh, we, we should be doing. You know, Michelle brought up some good points. Uh, I mean, if the people at Snug don't know these people or have no, uh, you know, that, that is concern, wouldn't you say? Um, uh, I mean, if the national group doesn't recognize these people, that, that, that could be a concern. I don't, I don't know what kind of concern that is. Might be legal concern. Maybe Dan could, uh, or Kevin could comment on that. I don't know. As for it being a positive thing, jeez, we do need some positive, uh, things happening. I'm going to be a yes vote on this, uh, because, uh, we're in some sad times right now.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Tony Davis?
Alderman Tony Davis, I was just sitting here listening. And we had a, a, um, lengthy discussion on Resolution Seventy-Four that passed. So we're, this is a win-win. We're getting twenty thousand dollars to rehabilitate a house, a house in Midtown and get, and hopefully pass it on to a first-time affordable homeowner. And we're going to now have this Resolution Seventy-Seven that passes. That's going to cost the city seventy-seven or twenty thousand to initiate a Snug program. That's going to help curb the violence, hopefully, in the city of Kingston and, and, and Midtown. So it's a win-win for the city of Kingston. Thank you.
Anybody else before I call for the vote? All right, I'll call for the vote now, all in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted eight to one. The opposition vote is Alderman Michelle Hirsch. Moving to Resolution Seventy-Eight, please.
Resolution Seventy-Eight of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing adopting a bond ordinance in the sum of seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for the construction of the Ellendorf Street Bridge for repair or replacement and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for professional services for the project.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Seventy-Nine, which is a bond ordinance, we'll have a long roll.
Resolution Seventy-Nine of two thousand twenty-one. Bond ordinance dated May fourth, two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar bond of the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay costs of the Ellendorf Street Bridge Rehabilitation Program, Project, and in for said city.
Long roll, please.
Alderman Coop?
Yes.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Yes.
Alderman Worthington?
Yes.
Alderman Tolloman?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Patrick, can you unmute?
Yes.
Alderman Shabbitt?
Yes.
Alderman Hirsch?
Yes.
Alderman Ventura Morrell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number Eighty, please.
Resolution Eighty of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance for the sum of three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for the Broadway and Grand Intersection Improvements Project construction and construction inspection costs.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted eight to one. The opposition vote is Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. Moving to Resolution Eighty-One, please, which is a bond ordinance.
Resolution Eighty-One of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar bonds of the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay part of the cost of the Broadway and Grand Intersection Project in and for said city.
On the question? Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell?
Um, I just want to state for the record, I'm not opposed to the project. I'm opposed to the cost of the project and the fact that the cost has ballooned significantly uh, from the initial proposal. Um, so, um, that is why I will be a no vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no more discussion, all, that long roll, please. Alyssa, you're muted.
All right. Alderman Scott Childress?
Yes.
Alderman Worthington?
Yes.
Alderman Tolloman?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Yes.
Alderman Shabbitt?
Yes.
Alderman Hirsch?
Yes.
Alderman Ventura Morrell?
Opposed.
Alderman Coop?
Yes.
Resolution is, bond is adopted eight to one. The opposition vote is Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell. Moving to Resolution Number Eighty-Two, please.
Resolution Eighty-Two of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the Kingston City School District for bike shelter to be placed at the George Washington Elementary School as per attached.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I will call for the vote, all in favor? Tony, I need, needs, all right, thank you. Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number Eighty-Three, please.
Resolution Eighty-Three of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor of the city of Kingston to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the city of Kingston and the county of Ulster regarding the sharing of economic development services.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number Eighty-Four, please.
Resolution Eighty-Four of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution eighty-four of two thousand twenty-one. Memorializing Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, urging the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to exercise its authority and responsibility for enforcing state and federal laws to protect water quality, particularly the releases to the Lower Esopis Creek, which has a direct impact on the City of Kingston.
On the question? Alderman Jeffrey Ventura Morrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just want to say briefly, our waterways and especially the Esopis Creek are one of the, the greatest natural assets that we have as a city. Uh, and so we, as elected officials, have to make sure that we uh, do everything we can in advocating that those in charge of protecting it, uh, do, do what they are supposed to. Um, I want to acknowledge, uh, County Executive Pat Ryan, who, uh, just today, uh, committed to, to doing so, uh, as we are doing, hopefully, if, if this resolution passes. And, um, I also want to thank, uh, the CAC, especially Julie Noble, as well as Riverkeeper for their commitment to this cause. Uh, and, uh, for those who have reached out to us and asked how the public can get involved and do more, I do have one resource. They can go to riverkeeper.org backlash, stop the mud uh, and, uh, and comment there or sign up to volunteer before June sixteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no more discussion. Uh, Alderman Patrick O'Reilly?
Ashokan Reservoir. Millions of people get their water from there. Reason that they send the muddy water down via Esopis Creek is to alleviate the amount of sediment in, uh, in the reservoir. They've been doing this since the reservoir began. It's a real problem. I mean, if you just look over the, the bridge there, uh, you, you can see the muddy waters uh, coming through the Kansas City of Kingston. It's really not nice. Hopefully, um, uh, they're working on, uh, solutions to that. What the, what this seems to be is Memorializing Resolution is just to remind them that look, the people of the City of Kingston uh, would like their, uh, creek not to be a mud, mud, muddy and terrible and not be able to swim in it, not be able to fish in it, not be able to use it. We'd like to be able to use our creek, our river, our, our water. We'd like to be able to use it. So, um, you know, I'm in favor of this. Uh, once in a while, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. We gotta be the squeaky wheel. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution number eighty-five, please.
Resolution eighty-five of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending the definition of hotel in the City of Kingston zoning code.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution number eighty-six, please.
Resolution eighty-six of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, removing handicap park parking on West Pier Pond Street.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution number eighty-seven, please.
Resolution eighty-seven of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to parking on the streets of the City of Kingston, New York, amending section three nine zero dash nine seven to remove no parking on the west side of Wall Street from Pearl to a point one hundred and fifty feet south.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. I'm sensing more delays in people's internet right now, so I'm just waiting a little bit longer in case you're wondering the hesitation. We're almost there. Moving to Resolution number eighty-eight, please.
Resolution eighty-eight of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the rec fee reserve to cover the city's share for the O P R H P funded Kingston Point Parks Improvement Project.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution number eighty-nine, please.
Resolution eighty-nine of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending section three nine zero dash nine two, schedule nine, stop intersections.
On the question, Alderman Tony Davis?
Madam President, and after speaking to Ed Norman, Superintendent D P W, I would like to motion to table this as the Finance Committee needs to discuss the cost of implementing these signs. And so I, I motioned to table it.
All right, there's a motion and a second by Rennie Scott Childress on the question to-
Sorry, uh, we, you mean send it back to committee, right?
Yes, I, it's late. I don't even know what I just said. Motion to send it back to committee.
Send it back to committee, I'm sorry.
Rennie, was that a second? Just to confirm that. All right. There's a motion to send back to committee by Alderman Tony Davis, followed by a second by Rennie Scott Childress on the question to send back to committee. Hearing no discussion, I will call for the vote to send this back to committee. All in favor? Opposed? Our motion to send this back to committee has passed nine to zero. Moving to Resolution number ninety, please.
Resolution ninety of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing adopting a bond ordinance in the sum of five million dollars for the Cooper Lake Dam and Intake Remediation Project.
On the question? Alderman Patrick O'Reilly?
Cooper Lake Dam. Cooper Lake is where the City of Kingston gets its water from. Um, it's, it's a very expensive project, um, but, uh, for future generations of people living in Kingston, we're gonna need to do this. Uh, so, um, I'm the S vote. Uh, we are so lucky in the City of Kingston. We have a wonderful supply of water out of the, out of the Catskill Mountains. So lucky, what a, how lucky people we are. I mean, if you lived in, uh, Texas or someplace like that, uh, you're not going to get that beautiful, uh, Catskill Mountain water that we get. Um, so, uh, it's expensive. Um, but we get, we're getting beautiful water. We're gonna need it and for future generations, uh, it's necessary. So it's our turn. We need to step up.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Alderwoman Michelle Hirsch and then Steve Chabot?
Yes, I agree with Alderman O'Reilly that this is work. And it's actually a monumental project. It's pretty amazing, the scope of work that is being done and the prices, um, of materials have gone up. But we will, um, we have the opportunity to apply for grants. Um, they've been starting to open up now again this year. And so Water Board can apply for grants, um, to offset this cost.
Thank you. Here we go. A little spotty at the end, so just waiting. Alderman Steve Chabot?
Thank you. Uh, just a point of information. Um, we are actually required to do this work. Um, you know, we don't really have a big choice here. Um, but we do have an added bonus that some of this may be, may be covered by some grants, so, you know, we might not use the whole amount, um, you know, but the work is, is required that we move forward, so. But it's a good thing. It's a good project and, uh, you know, I, you know, we don't have choice, so obviously I'm voting yes.
Thank you. Alderman Rennie Scott Childress?
Yes, just, uh, so for folks who aren't familiar, uh, two million of this three million may never be used. It's to cover the potential purchase of water from the Ashokan Reservoir of New York City in case there's a drought during the process of constructing the dam. So we're hoping between the things that Michelle talked about, potential for grants, uh, the hope that, uh, once the COVID crisis has passed and, uh, the cost of, uh, building materials may go down again, plus uh, everybody pray for rain. And if we don't have a drought, we'll not be spending a fair amount of that money. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution ninety-one, please, which is a bond.
Resolution ninety-one of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional five million dollar bonds of the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay costs in connection with the Cooper Lake Dam and Intake Remediation Project in and for said city. Alderman Worthington?
Yes.
Alderman Tolloman?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Yes.
Alderman Chabot?
Yes.
Alderman Hirsch?
Yes.
Alderman Ventura Morrell?
Yes.
Alderman Coop?
Yes.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Yes.
Bond is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution number ninety-two.
Resolution ninety-two of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting the standard workdays for elected and appointed officials in the New York State Retirement System.
On the question? Alderman Patrick O'Reilly?
I recuse myself, uh, due to the fact that it has to do with my employment.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted eight to one, the one vote being the recusal by Alderman O'Reilly. That ends our communications for the evening. Um, before we close, uh, Alderman Rennie Scott Childress?
Sorry, am I jumping the gun? I want to, uh, mention somebody before we close.
It may be the same somebody I was going to mention. If you want to go, go for it.
All right. Um, I'd like to close this meeting in honor of Tommy Keegan, who died unexpectedly at the age of fifty, full of life and wildness. Uh, and he lived right up the street here from me, so saw him frequently. I live right next to his aunt, so stories are legend. Uh, Tommy, uh, had gone to school in California, University of Davis Viniculture Program, which is one of the world's famous places to learn how to be a brewmaster. He brought his skills back here, uh, to his native Long Island where he started a brewery and then got the idea of moving up to Kingston to take over an old brewery that had been here a long time ago. And it ended up being quite a success. Large measure of that success was not just the skills that Tommy had developed, uh, in school, but in his ability to make friends, to create community, bring people together. He was a, a wonderfully lyrical person. His aunt told me that, uh, when he was first coming up here, they bought the, the place, uh, over here where Keegan Ales would be, but they hadn't started brewing there yet. And there was going to be a St. Patrick's Day, uh, parade and event, and Tommy wanted to get up here and, uh, let people know about his beer. His aunt was telling him, oh, Tommy, you're never going to make it down to the Strand because there's, all the roads are closed, there's too many people. You're just not going to get there. And Tommy said, I'm coming up. She said, don't even bother. You can't get down there. It's all closed up. It's too many people. He said, I'm coming. And he did come. And low and behold, made it down to the Strand and he looked at his aunt and he said, Mr. Obama, you wait over here. Mr. Beer Man, come on through. He understood the power of his product and he also understood his audience. Another time, I had gone with his family. They were visiting out in California. And, uh, he had driven members of the family down into Mexico for the day. They were driving back up to San Diego where they were staying. And all of a sudden he stops the car on the highway and he gets out and he runs up a hill. And everybody in the car saying, what in the world is going on? What, what were you doing? And he got back in the car and he said, looked like a great hill to run up. I think that encapsulates well, one of the crucial elements of Tommy's basic philosophy. Have fun, play nice. And I'm sure that he would wish that on all of us if he were still with us. We can wish on him, the power of his memory that we'll hold dear for eons to come.
Thank you, Rennie. And I just want to offer my sincere condolences to not only uh, Tommy's family and friends, but the entire community because he's one of our greatest. Um, the other one who we recently lost is, uh, Edwin Ford, and I'm, there might be others who want to speak on him, but I also want to, um, say my condolences to his family and friends and again, our whole community because he's another one of our legends. Um, thank him for the service for, he has provided for Kingston, including thirty-five years as our city historian, but he also served as president of Friends of Historic Kingston for two terms and was a board member for many years. He also serves on boards, the Salvation Army, the City of Kingston Community Development Com- Commission, the Kingston Historic Landmark Preservation Commission, the Kingston Waterfront Commission, the Ulster County Historical Society, the Fireman's Museum, and was chairman of the Old Dutch Church Heritage Museum for twenty-five years. He served as deacon and elder at Old Dutch for many years as well. Um, he, I think we all probably have really fond memories of Ed and I don't think, uh, we ever walked away from a conversation not learning a little bit more. Uh, but he also really shared his love of the city that was kind of, that was infectious. And then, uh, I also wanted to, he, um, mentioned that he is from our nation's greatest generation serving in World War Two. He served with the United States Air Force, so thanking him for that service and, uh, we lost two greats. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Alderman Steve Chabot?
Thank you. Yeah, Ed was on my list, but you did a great job. He was one of the nicest guys you'd ever want to meet, a real gentleman. Um, soft spoken, he, he did a tremendous amount for this city. But I also would like to mention a friend of mine, Joe Kennick. Uh, he passed after a, a long battle with cancer. Um, Joe was a couple of years older, a couple years ahead of me in high school. Joe was a real one back then. Um, since those days, um, I had the opportunity to coach his son in a couple of different sports. Billy League and Babe Ruth League, and I got to know Joe and he was a really nice guy. Um, you know, we, you know, we got to be pretty good friends. Uh, Joe served in the army, served, served in Vietnam. He worked thirty years for CSX. Um, he was a member of the Legion of V F W, the N R A. Um, and he is survived by his wife, Jean Dixon Kennick, who I grew up with. Um, leaves behind two daughters and a son that I mentioned, five grandkids and a brother and sister also. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Alderman Patrick O'Reilly?
I'd like to add in, uh, honor of, uh, Jerry- I'd like to end in honor of Jerry Mackey, friend of mine, and attended Kingston City Schools for a period of time. Just one of those guys you'll always remember. Every time you saw him, Jerry Mackey made you smile, made you laugh. He died young, sadly. But, boy, was he a nice, nice, nice man. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Alright, that concludes our council meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman Jeffrey Ventor Morrell, seconded by Tony Davis. All in favor? Anybody opposed? We hereby stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on June 1st. But just note that clock is gonna be May 31st. Which is Memorial Day.
Are we doing Memorial Day?
Why don't we discuss this? I'll send out an email and figure that out, so we could see that. I just pulled up my calendar and saw that, so let's discuss this.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice night.
Good night, everyone.